All right. So, good afternoon. I'll go ahead and get started. Boy, the sound system is quite different.
It's kind of awesome.
All right, so pursuant to Section 841411 of the Nebraska statutes, notice that this meeting was given on June 7th of 2024. Agenda items are subject to reordering at the discretion of the Board President. Please attend the entire meeting to ensure you're able to hear any discussion. Pursuant to that same section of the Nebraska statutes, the next regular meeting of the Omaha School Employees Retirement System Board of Trustees will be held on Thursday, August 1st at 4:00 PM in the Teacher Teaching and Learning Center of the Teacher Administrative Center here at 3215 Cummings Street. The agenda will be kept current and available for public inspection in the retirement office at the Teacher Administrative Building during regular working hours. Pursuant to Section 841412 of the Nebraska statutes, the public is hereby informed that a current copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is posted in the board meeting room on the north wall. So with that, Mr. Ryan, would you call the roll?
Mr. Born.
Here.
Ms. Erdnberger.
Present.
Ms. Block.
Present.
Mr. Head. Mr. Herkenbach. Ms. Johnson.
Here.
Mr. Ray.
Here.
Five present.
All right, so, thank you. I'd entertain a motion to excuse the absences of those board members that are not here.
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Ryan?
Mr. Born?
Yes.
Ms. Erdnberger?
Yes.
Ms. Block? Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Five ayes.
Thank you. The first item on the agenda this afternoon is public comment. Public comment is an opportunity for the public to address the Board of Trustees with comments and opinions. As a reminder, with last year's passage of L.B. 83 by the Nebraska Legislature, the Board of Trustees is legally obligated to require any member of the public desiring to address the board to identify himself or herself, including an address and the name of any organization you may represent. Please state and spell your name and state your address for the record at the beginning of your comments. If you have materials to distribute, please let me know, and Mr. Ryan will come get them from you for distribution. Is there anyone present this afternoon that would like to address the board? Mr. Roger Ray?
Good afternoon. Put this on. Hello. My name is Roger Ray, spelled R-E-A, which is the correct spelling for the name, in case that makes any difference. I'm a retiree from Omaha Public Schools and live at 12914 Pacific Street in Omaha, Nebraska, 68154. I have several things I want to talk with you about today. There is a need to have a comprehensive description of the Omaha Retirement System Plan in booklet form. Ossers used to have a booklet form for the handbook. I know that INPERS has one. I think it'd be wise for you to try to develop a plan to get that booklet republished or reprinted before the merger or transition and goes to Lincoln. So they have something that they can use as a document to start with. Those documents are used in the member education all across the state, and every plan has one. I think Ossers would be wise to try to get that draft put together on their own first. Second thing, OPS needs to have a policy that will allow the new member of the Ossers per boards, the trustee for Ossers, to attend those meetings without loss of leave time. In the last couple of years, anybody who served on the Ossers Board, in order to attend an Ossers meeting or attend to a training session, had to take personal time and loss of pay. That's not an appropriate way to handle people who are giving up their time and devoting to public service like that. So I would suggest that you look at the OPS policies on terms of leave time or attending meetings, as well as training sessions for Ossers, for the Ossers trustee who will be appointed sometime in the near future. The Ossers also has now a ability to offer all-day seminars starting at below age 50. It used to be age 50 and above. I'm not sure if the OPS policies allow for below age 50. Might look at techniques, discipline, and that. That has been appropriately changed since the law was changed to require that anybody who's a member of Ossers can attend an all-day training session below the age of 50. I think that was only 1365. Members also need to know how they can get their information for their direct deposit amounts for their Ossers checks on the 3rd of the month. In the past, they've always gotten a paper copy of the deposit slip. I understand that will be terminated as of September, and I don't think there's been any communication yet from Ossers or from INPERS about how that communication, how people will find that out. I think that's something that needs to be addressed soon. And I'm hoping that a newsletter will be coming from Ossers as well as from INPERS. I know that the Ossers had planned three newsletters. I understand that's now down to two. We had also had planned, I think they had planned three communications from INPERS. I've only received one. I'm not sure there's another one, another two in the books. But communication is key. This transition is something that's brand-new. It's going to be affecting every single member of the retirement system, and people need to know what's going on. And the only way they can know is if you tell them. I can tell the members that I deal with, but I only deal with maybe 800 to 1,000 members. And there are more than 5,000 members of Ossers who are retirees, and those are the people who are going to be needing a communication who don't have any other way of getting that information. Finally, I know that the Ossers representative on the per board was supposed to be appointed in the last legislative session. That didn't happen. I'm not sure the governor considers this a priority appointment, so it's not likely to happen until sometime in the fall, which means the Ossers will not be represented on the per board until January at the earliest, if they're confirmed in January. But as a general rule, the legislature has delayed the confirmation of appointments until the last week of the legislative session, which means it wouldn't probably be until June of next year. I think you need to start applying pressure now to get the appointment made and also to make sure that the Ossers is represented on that board, either as a person that is a voting member or if they don't have voting members, at least have an observer at those meetings. I'm not sure how you select someone to be an observer, but there ought to be someone at the INPERS meetings checking to see who's, what's going on and allowing, getting together with the members to let them know what's going on as well. I think my time is probably pretty close-up. But if there's questions, I'll be glad to respond to those. I do hope that you do meet in August. I know that the last meeting you missed. Hopefully, you'll not miss a meeting in August because that's the final one. If I have questions, I'll be glad to respond otherwise. Thank you for your time.
Are there any questions for Roger? I know that you said that last time. Thank you, Roger, or Mr. Ray. Are there any other members of the public that wish to address the transition board? All right. Seeing none, that'll conclude the public comment portion of our agenda, and we'll move on to approval of the December 7th, 2023 meeting minutes. So the minutes of the last Ossers Board of Trustees meeting that was held on Thursday, December 7th, have been presented to the transition board members for their review. Are there any amendments or corrections?
Make a motion to approve.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second on the approval of the minutes. Mr. Ryan?
Mr. Born?
Approved.
Ms. Erdnberger?
Approved.
Ms. Block?
Approved.
Mr. Head?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Ray?
Aye.
Six ayes. Mr. Born?
All right, they are approved. Next, we'll move to agenda item number four, the presentation of the valuation report as of January 1st. Mr. Brian Hoagie and Ms. Megan Skiles from Cavlin &amp; McDonald will now present a summary of the Ossers valuation report. That's as of January 1st, 2023.
Right. Thank you. Good afternoon, everybody. It's a little bittersweet today here. We get this nice new, brand-new space to come present. I feel like I'm at the aquarium, but it's probably going to be the last time that we get to do this before September makes the transition. So some good, some bad. Pat Beckham, I think everybody has met her before. She's traveling today, so we brought along Megan Skiles. She actually does a lot of the heavy lifting for us. Been at CavMac for about seven years. So we'll let her do the heavy part of this presentation and kind of bounce around a little bit. So what we're here today to talk about is the annual valuation. So we kind of have to rewind our minds a little bit back to January 1, 2024. So everything is as of that date. Snapshot, look at the valuation. What the valuation is, is a statistical projection of future benefit payments. Problem is, we don't know the amounts of these benefit payments in the future or the timing of them, and so we need to use a number of different assumptions. So that's what the actuaries kind of come in here to help do this stuff. So we don't know how long people are going to work, when they're going to retire, when they're going to terminate, what their pay increases are going to be, and then when they do start benefits, how long are they going to live? And so that's where a number of assumptions come in to help us project what those benefits are, bring them back to today, compare them with the assets that we currently have, and that really drives our funded status and the additional district contribution and the contributions in general. So that's really the main purpose of the valuation that we're looking at each year. Things happen throughout the year, and so we want to make us, or we want to do an annual review, kind of an annual checkup each year to make sure that we're adjusting where we should be, making appropriate changes to the contributions, the additional district contributions to make sure we're headed in that right path to be able to pay these benefits in the future. So funding policy, both members and the state and the school district all helped contribute to fund these benefits. So it's not a pay-as-you-go. It's really, we're pre-funding these benefits. So members put in 9.78% of their pay. The state puts in additional 2%, and then the school district puts in 101% of the contributions that the members pay or an amount necessary to maintain the solvency of the system. And that's really where we've been. The 101% of a member's contribution has not recently been enough to stay actuarially sound, and that's where that additional district contribution comes in. And so that's been there for quite a while and continues to be projected to have additional district contributions if all assumptions are met. And you'll hear us say that statement quite a bit here as we go through this. If you remember, back in 2021, we did an experience study where we analyzed all the assumptions and methods and things like that, and we decided to phase in over a four-year period the economic assumptions that we analyzed at that time. Right here, 2024 valuation, we are one step away from the final implementation. So we went from a price inflation assumption of 2.6% down to 2.55% this year. The investment return assumption, or what do we assume that we're going to earn on these assets each year, came down from 7.3% to 7.2%. Again, we have one step next year with valuation. And then the covered payroll and the general wage increase also decreased just by five basis points. So that's kind of what happened with the change in assumptions from last year to this year. And these are all forward-looking assumptions. When we say 7.2% is the investment return assumption, this is now what we're assuming we're going to earn in the future. Not what's happened in the past. It's kind of over and done with, but what do we expect to happen going forward? So anytime we change assumptions, as we talked about, those future benefit payments change too, and so that changes our results. So here on Slide 5, we take a look at what did the impact of those assumption changes that we just showed on the last slide have on the valuation? So the first line here, the actuarial accrued liability. This liability number is really, if in a perfect world, what would our funding be? How much will we have in assets to be 100% funded? So for every member throughout their career, we're funding them to have enough money when they retire, and so that curve along that path is really that actuarial liability. And so by changing these assumptions, that increased the actuarial accrued liability by $29 million. No change in assets, so that increased our unfunded actuarial accrued liability by $29 million as well. So that unfunded liability, that debt portion that we need to systematically pay off, which Megan will talk about here, that increased by $29 million. Assets don't change. Liabilities increase. The funded ratio is just assets divided by liabilities, so that decreased from a little over 60% to just below 50, or just below 60%, so 0.64% decrease in the funded ratio. We now need to put in more. So when we decrease our assumed rate of return, we've probably mentioned this formula before. We don't have it up here, but there's a C plus I equals B plus E. Contributions plus investment income equals benefits plus expenses. So in the long term, those need to equal out. If we're lowering our I, our investment return assumption, so we assume that we're going to earn less on investments, keep that equation balanced, contributions need to go up. And so that's where we see this total required contribution rate now increased by 58 basis points to help keep this system in balance, right? Heading where we want to go to be able to fund these benefits. So all that means is the additional district contribution would have been just over $31 million. Now we're $33.7, so about $2.5 million increase due to these scheduled changes in assumptions. Now, we do have one more step on there because we're going to go down from 7.28 to 7. That's what. We decided back in 2021, every four years, we needed to do an experience study based on state statutes. We'll do another one back in 2025. But when this next phase-in comes in, so next year, the 2025 valuation, when all these assumptions are in, we're expecting an additional $53 million in liability and increase, a 1.12% increase in contribution. And if we recognized everything right now, that additional district contribution, instead of being 33.7, would have been up to 38.5. So again, this is just to let you know what's coming in the next year because this has already been scheduled. So just a look at what happened in 2023, in calendar year '23s. We did have a return on market value of assets of 13.3%. So again, above what we assumed, that 7.3% from the past, what we assumed. So that's good. That increased our market value of assets. But as Megan will talk about here, we have some deferred gains and losses from our assets because we don't recognize everything. We don't use the market value. We kind of smooth in those results to help reuse volatility. We had some deferred asset losses from prior years that we are still recognizing. So when we take some of those deferred losses plus only recognizing part of that 13.3% return on the market value, our return on the actuarial value of assets was 5.6. We compare that to our 7.3. We missed it by a little bit, and that translates to a $27 million actuarial loss. So that will flow through that unfunded liability. On the liability side, what happens to people? So we have all these assumptions, but people don't always retire when we think they will, terminate when we think they will. They don't live as long as we think they will. Everything's different, and so we always have a gain or a loss. And so this year, we had a $24 million loss on liabilities, and that was mainly due to higher increases on salaries than was assumed. We had some stipends that were in there that were not built into the assumption. So we had higher payroll. Again, higher pay equals, translates to higher benefits, those benefit payments out in the future. If we have higher benefit payments on the future, that increases our liability. Additional district contribution was 34.4 in '23. It was calculated only 29.4, so we actually put in an additional $5 million above and beyond what was needed to stay actuarially sound. That $5 million will flow straight down to pay off that unfunded debt, that unfunded liability. So that's just straight to the bottom line, helping the funded ratio and just to get us to 100% funded sooner. Overall, we had about $75 million increase in liability, mostly due to what we just talked about. The investment return, the liabilities from the higher salaries, and then that assumption change. That's really the bulk of the change in the unfunded liability. And then funded ratio changed just slightly from 61% to 60% on the actuarial value. Market value actually increased from 54% to 57% because we had that 13% return, right? So one is the smoothed value, which we're using for most of these calculations. The market value is just what would happen if we recognized everything right now, and that's that 57% funded ratio. So with that, I'm going to let Megan go through the bulk of the results here.
I'm going to talk about the membership data over the next few slides. And the data is really the basis for our liabilities. So good data is required to get good liability results. And this slide just shows a summary of where our membership data is at as of the January 1st, 2024 evaluation compared to last year's valuation. So for active members, for certificated members, there were 3,805 versus 3,974 last year, so a small decrease. Classified members went up. There are 2,908 this year compared to 2,738 last year. In total, active membership stayed about the same, right there at 6,713. For in-pay members or retirees and disabled members currently receiving a benefit, there were 5,125 this year, a small increase from last year. Beneficiaries stayed about the same at 286 members. Inactive vested members increased a little bit at 1,628. Those are members who are terminated but will be receiving a benefit in the future, that deferred benefit. And then inactive non-vesteds increased to 1,657. Those are just inactive members or terminated members who are owed a refund due of their contributions. So in total, membership went up about 2.3% to 15,409 members. And then this is a further breakdown of the active membership by tier. So if we look at our certificated members, tier one is our oldest tier. That's anyone who was hired before July 1st, 2013. There were 1,855 of those. For classified members, tier one is down to 845. And these older tiers, we do expect to keep decreasing as these members retire. Tier two is anyone hired between 2013 and 2016. Tier three is anyone hired between 2016 and 2018. You can kind of see how those numbers are decreasing as well. And then our newest tier is anyone hired after July 1st, 2018, in tier four. For certificated members, that's up to 1,217 members. And for classified members, that's 1,576. So in total, you can see certificated members had a small decrease. They're now at 3,805. Classified members is up to 2,908. And then again, just in total, stayed right about the same at 6,713. And then here's one more way to look at our active membership. Each tier is a different color, and that darker shade is the certificated members, and the lighter shade is classified. You can see that tier four makes up the biggest portion of this graph, and we expect that orange portion, that tier four, to continue to increase in the future as the older tier members retire and more new hires come in. Moving on to talk about the assets. As Brian mentioned, we don't use the market value of assets directly in the valuation due to the volatility. So we use a smoothing method to smooth out the ups and downs of the market returns over time. And this just helps create stability and predictability in that contribution rate. Otherwise, it would be fluctuating year to year with the market value of assets. So our current smoothing method is we use the expected asset value. That's based on the actual return or the assumed return plus 25% of the difference between the actual market value and the expected asset value. Or another way to look at that, it's equivalent to 75% of the expected value of assets plus 25% of the market value of assets. And this slide shows why we use a smoothed value of assets. So the dark black line here, that's our assumed rate of return, which is currently at 7 point, or was at 7.3% for 2023. With this valuation, we're down to that 7.1%. But the blue line here is the market value return. And you can see how that deviates a lot from that black line. The red line is the actuarial value return. And you can see that's closer. It still moves a lot, but it's closer to that black line, that assumed rate of return. So if we didn't use a smoothed value, again, that contribution rate would be going up and down a lot more with the market. And this slide is a summary of our asset experience for 2023. You can see at the beginning of the year, there was $1.4 billion on the market value of assets and $1.6 billion on an actuarial value of assets. You guys brought in $130 million in contributions. $160 million went out in benefit payments and expenses. And then for investment income, there was $187 million on the market value of assets, but only $88 million on an actuarial value of assets as we're smoothing in some losses from prior years. So that gave you an end-of-the-year value of 1.6 or 1.57 billion on the market value of assets and 1.65 billion on an actuarial value of assets. Or the rate of return on a market value of assets was 13.3%. But on an actuarial value of assets was only 5.6%, which is less than that 7.3% assumption. So that difference between 7.3 and 5.6 is that actuarial loss, which was 27 million, as Brian mentioned earlier. And as you can see, our actuarial value of assets is still higher than our market value of assets by 81 million. So that's an unrecognized investment loss, which is deferred to future years. So we expect future losses on the actuarial value of assets unless there is positive investment experience in future years. So here's a summary of some of the key results for the 1124 evaluation. That first line is our actuarial accrued liability or the portion of liability attributable to past years of service, the amount of assets that theoretically we should have for funding the plan as of 1124. And that was 2.76 billion. And our actuarial value of assets, as we just talked about, was 1.65 billion. And then the difference between those two numbers is our unfunded actuarial liability, the amount that we need to make up, and that's 1.11 billion. And then the funded ratio on an actuarial value of assets is just our assets divided by our liability. That's 60%. And on a market value of assets, it's 57%. This graph shows the funded ratio, and that's one way to measure a system's progress over time. And I do want to point out that bottom line, we're starting at 50% just to get a closer look at the ups and downs over time. If we had zoomed out and started at 0%, you, this line would be higher. It would look a little bit better. But we just want to zoom in and see the difference here. So you can see at the beginning of this period, back in 2004, we started off at 80%. Up in 2007, we jumped up because the assets, the actuarial value of assets, were reset equal to the market value of assets. Then you can see that sharp decline where we had the Great Recession and where that was recognized in our asset smoothing method over the next several years. The next big decline was in 2017 with an experience study. The key driver there was changing the investment return assumption from 8% to 7.5%. As Brian said, when the investment assumption is lower, you need more contributions. Our funded ratio goes down too. And then right at the end, you can see currently, we're right around 60%. And you can see we had a rough return in 2022, which was recognized in that 2023 valuation and is still being recognized in our asset smoothing method. This graph shows some of the key changes in the unfunded actuarial liabilities. As we mentioned before, the district contributed an extra $5 million, which goes directly to bringing down our UAAAL. The other key things here are the investment experience, that $27 million loss from our 5.6% return on an actuarial value of assets, which was less than the 7.3 assumed, the $24 million loss on liability experience, which was from salaries that were higher than expected, and then the 29 million from assumption changes, which were driven by lowering that investment return assumption. All of that baked in together, and we had a UAAAL that went from 1.035 billion and has now increased to 1.11 billion. Moving on, we're going to talk about the actuarial contribution rate. This is composed of three main pieces. The normal cost, which is the ongoing cost for active members, administration expenses, which we have an assumption for that we set in the experience study. These are expenses that we expect to pay. These are expect, expenses that we expect to pay every year from the trust. And then the UAL payment, that payment to pay down the unfunded actuarial accrued liability every year. And that's done on a level percent of payroll basis. So even if we had the exact same percent every year, we expect payroll to increase. So same percent, higher dollar amount of payroll, that contribution amount is going to increase as well. And we use a layered approach for our UAL payment. So the legacy base was set in 2019 with the entire unfunded actuarial accrued liability. That was amortized over 30 years. There's 25 years left to pay that off. And then every year, we add a new base for experience for that plan year. Those were originally over closed 30-year periods. And in 2022, that was changed to be 25-year periods. So we're going to fund those in a shorter time period now. Then going on, here's a breakdown in numbers of that contribution amount. You can see that normal cost piece is 12.74% to fund the ongoing cost of active members. The admin expense is 0.24% every year. And then this year, our amortization of the UAL is 16.38% for a total contribution rate of 29.36%. And the members pay that statutory rate of 9.78%. Employers pay 101% of the member rate or 9.88%. The state pays 2%. And that leaves a contribution shortfall of 7.7% or that additional required contribution from the district, which is 33.7 million, based on the projected payroll for this upcoming year. And then this slide shows a breakdown of the change in the actuarial required contribution rate. So last year, it was 28.82%. Some of the key things here, again, like with the unfunded actuarial accrued liability, were the investment experience, which increased the rate by 0.4% from that $27 million loss on investment experience. Liability experience from salaries that were higher than we expected, that increased the contribution rate by 0.36%. Payroll growth higher, higher than we expected, decreased that rate by 0.53%. Higher payroll, we expect more contributions to be coming in. And then assumption changes, again, increased the contribution rate by 0.58%. Giving us a total contribution rate for 1124 of 29.36%. And then I'll pass it off to Brian unless there are any questions.
All right, just a couple more you need to bear with us here. So that was kind of the overview of what happened from 2023 to 2024, right? So how did we get to 2024? As actuaries, we also like to look at, what do we expect in the future? Going forward, not just, you know, one year, but a few years out. So this graph here, we're looking at the additional district contributions projected out for the next seven years, if all assumptions are met. Again, not everybody's going to retire when it happens. We're not going to hit 7.2% every single year like we assume. But if that does happen, here's what we look at. So we had that 33.7 million in 2024. 2025, we know that we're reducing that assumed rate of return and changing those assumptions one more time until we get that last phase in. So that's going to increase the contribution rate. And the additional district contribution is extremely volatile because the members' rate is fixed. The 101% that the district puts in is fixed. The 2% that the state puts in is fixed. So any up and down movement falls to that additional district piece. So that's why, this is probably the most important one to look at because it can move up and down so much more with any, anything that doesn't happen as expected. So we phase in those assumption changes. We jump up over, just over 40 million, 40.6 million. And then the three years after that is really phasing in that $81 million of deferred loss that we have. So this is recognizing all those. We're assuming we're in 7.2 and then 7, and 7, 7 exactly. And then after that, everything's fully recognized. But we still see that dollar amount increasing. And that goes back to what Megan was saying, that we have a level percent of payroll, but we still assume that payroll is going to increase by 3.05%. Or by the time we get out there, I think it's 2.85%. So payroll's increasing, even if that percentage is the same. Dollar amounts continue to go up by that 2.85%. So that's why we see that increasing. Just for comparison, I went back and looked at last year where we were at. And for 2024, we expected 35.5. We ended up at 33.7, and that was really due to that 13.3% return on the market value of assets, the additional contributions that we did put in. Because we're going to have gains and losses every year, but really, the return is what drives the results more than anything else. And so even that 13.3 compared to the 7.3 makes a, makes a big difference. Just as actuaries, we love standards of practice. We kind of guide ourselves on these. And there's 56 of them. This is one of them that talks about risks, ASOP 51. We're just going to have one slide here just because OSERS is such a mature system. It's been around for so long. We have a lot of our liability tied up in retirees. I think 55, 56, maybe even 60% of our liability is retiree liability or in-pay members, members that are currently receiving benefits. And why that matters is when we do have ups and downs in the market, we have market losses, it's much tougher to recover from those because our active membership is really what's bringing in our contributions, right? Over our, over our covered payroll, when the liability is for the whole group as a total. And so it's just one thing to mention here because of that. And there's nothing wrong with it. You've been putting in contributions for the system. That's what we're doing, right? We're trying to pay these benefits for these, these members that are currently receiving benefits. It's just something that with OSERS, it has a little bit more impact on when we do have fluctuations in those, in those returns. It's just harder, harder to make up because of the mature system. And again, like we mentioned before, it all flows to that additional district contribution. You have a down year. Members' rate doesn't change, 101%, the 2% doesn't change. Everything flows to the additional district contribution. So we do look at this, just kind of see what it would, what it would do. So this scenario here, a what-if scenario or kind of a scenario testing is, what if we had one year where we didn't hit our assumed rate of return, but we missed it by 10%? So this next year, instead of earning 7.2%, we earn 10% less than that or a minus 2.8. What's that do to the additional district contribution? And so that's the, the blue bars going up here versus the gray bars. And you can see that it's constantly increasing as we're phasing in that, that investment loss that would happen. So you get out about five to 10 years, it's about $10 million of additional district contributions just by missing our expected return for one year by 10%. And kind of as a gauge, how likely is that 10%? So now we're getting real fancy actuarial terms, like standard deviation is how much up above or below that assumed rate of return, that 7.2%? They say about 10 to 12% up and down, so like a 20 to a 25% range. You're going to be within that range two out of three years. That means one of those three years, you're going to be either above 10% above that or, you know, 10% below. So it does happen. It's not like it's a once-in-a-lifetime thing. And so it's just knowing how volatile these investment returns can be and the impact that they can have. One of the questions I get asked on this whenever I show this slide too is, well, yeah, that's great if we have a minus 10, or it's not great. Great that you show the minus 10% return versus our assumed, but isn't the same probability if we have, you know, a 17.2% return? And, and yeah, it is, like 10% above. But nobody really seems to get worked up if the additional district contribution goes way down and it stays under 40 million for the next seven years, things like that. So we're not always bringing bad news, but it's usually, that's the harder piece to swallow if a 10% return below the assumed rate versus a 10% above. But it is, we could show the other one as well, just to be fair. Just to wrap up here, Megan touched on a lot of these. But our funded ratio, kind of that, one of the metrics we look at just decreased a little bit in the 2024 valuation, down to 60%. That was the actuarial loss on the, the assets, on the liabilities from the higher salaries. And then those assumption changes that we were smoothing in, kind of those three big pieces that really contributed to that. The district shortfall contribution, 7.7%. So again, that's going to be that 33.7 million for this, for this year, up from just under 30 last year. And then with the funded status and the phase in and the deferred losses, we do kind of saw that here. We do expect that additional district contribution still to rise if all assumptions are met. But can't mention it enough that the investment returns are really going to drive, whether that goes up and down, like if we have higher salaries or we have people that live longer or retire earlier, that's really a drop in the bucket compared to what those investment returns do to drive, drive contribution. So with that, we will stop here, I think. Yep, and we'll open up if you guys have any questions.
All right, are there any questions for Mr. Hoagie or Ms. Gals?
You know I do.
Ms. Ergenberger?
Thank you for your presentation. It just seems so more impressive when it's huge. So nicely done. I'm sorry that we, the little goldfish that are supposed to be floating through there, I don't know what happened to that, but we'll, we'll get on it. I do have a couple of questions, just to make sure I understand things. Okay, I got that, I got that. Do your assumptions about, you know, looking for, I'm assuming that your assumptions about what our overall picture looks like changed because of the change in our retirement rate? I mean, is that, does that feature into it so that your numbers, I guess, I guess maybe my question is how reliable are your projections? Have you, where we used to have 10% retirement, now we have 20% retirement or whatever the numbers really are? Have, have your assumptions taken the fact that there's more retiring going on?
Yes, so the last, every four years, we have to do the experience study where we analyze all these assumptions, including retirement rates. And so back in 2021, we looked at kind of what those, what those patterns were. And for demographic assumptions, including retirement and terminations and things, generally what's happened in the past is a pretty good indicator of what's hap, or expected to happen in the future. And so we did increase the retirement rates with the last experience study. We will analyze those again in 2025 and take another look. So if over the last three years, we've had a really high increase in retirements, that will get reflected. The other thing is, if we do have one year of a spike, let's say, like after COVID, we had a lot of retirements, we reflect that in the next valuation. So all those get captured and we kind of restart. So when we're saying we're doing the snapshot at 1124, we capture all that experience and kind of start fresh with, now here's what we expect going forward. We capture those high ones, and now we're, what we expect going forward has kind of been reset. I guess one other point is, when we do that experience study, it's every four years. And so we'll have four years of data. If there's one year that's kind of abnormal, like COVID for mortality was, was one of those. We had a lot more deaths than we had in the, in the prior four years or before that. And so we had to kind of take a look and say, do we really expect that to be the new norm? Or do we throw that one year out, kind of look at a longer period and then base our assumption on that to not make any drastic movements? Because what we don't want to do is say, oh, tons of retirements this year, tons of deaths. Let's assume that's going to be the case going forward. And then it was an anomaly, and then four years later, like, oh, whoops, now we need to come back down. So we like to make our changes pretty incrementally. If we see it two or three times in a row, like, okay, maybe this is the trend. We'll go all the way there, but we don't want to overreact to any. But to answer your question, yes, retirement, those have been built in.
So that does change, because looking forward to the next, you know, 10, 20 years there, I don't want to be relying on our 2015 retirement rate because we all know it has changed just regardless. I was a little bit concerned. I'm looking at your pie chart. It happens to be on slide nine, if anybody cares. It appears, as a matter of fact, I think my math is right. Shane can always double check me. But it looks like our tier one is 41% of the chart. And our tier four is also 41% of our chart. Yeah, yeah, okay, so 80%. I guess my concern is, is this telling me that 41% of our beneficiaries are people that were hired in tier four? And those are the people that became a member after 2018? So 41% of our beneficiaries are people that joined us after 2018 and have already left? Is that what that's telling me?
This is only active memberships.
Oh, thank you.
Yes, that would have been, I agree. But yes, this is the actively working members.
Okay, so that, they're just people that are in the system somehow. It's not that we've had a bunch of people come in and just turn right around and get the heck out.
Ms. Ergenberger, those would be members that are actively contributing to the plan at this point in time. And so we would expect, since there was a very short period for members to qualify for tier two and tier three, them to be the minority. And we would anticipate as we go throughout the years that the tier one portion of that is going to be decreasing while the tier four portion is going to be an ever-increasing part of that.
Unless we create a tier five, right? Will we cap tier? And maybe I don't know what the point of the tiers is, and that's probably another question, but. Tier four will only increase until we cap it out, right?
Correct.
Okay, I got it. Our funded ratio went from 61 to 60%. I happen to be looking on page 13, but it comes up in a number of different places. That's almost entirely because of the drop in our investment assumption. Am I right about that? Because we actually had pretty good returns?
So this last year, yes, if you go back to the, kind of the historical, historical, there were, there's been a number of changes with the investment return where every system got hammered back in the Great Recession. That's clearly a big portion of this. Almost every system has also lowered their assumed rate of return in the last 10 to 15 years. And again, when you lower the assumed rate of return, that increases your liabilities and lowers that funded ratio. So I believe it was 10 years ago, the, the average and the median investment return assumption was 8% and even higher than that before. And now it's below 7%. And so we'll be at 7% next year. So that's been kind of a trend for a lot of systems, including OSERS, which hurts that funded status as well. It's hard to catch up when you're assuming you're going to earn 8%. You're funding for that, and then it'll drop like, oh, now I'm behind. And so if, this is not uncommon to see some, some decreases for a lot of systems just because of those, those factors over the last 10 to 15 years. Really, what maybe is almost better on some of these projections, and maybe we should add, add a slide there, is what's the funded ratio look like going forward if all assumptions are met? Again, and that's why we do these experiences, to have the best assumptions we can, can have based on the information we know. And that expected funded ratio stays flat for a few years as we recognize these losses. And then it does still get to 100% funded based on our funding policy.
But specifically, the reduction in the, the funded ratio change in just the last 12 months is largely the fact that we took our 7.3 down to 7.2 or whatever we're at right now. Is that right?
Yes, so that, that was a big portion of that, that 1% drop in the funding.
And are you telling me that those big drops between six and eight, for example, were there investment return changes, assumption changes made back there? Or were those actual losses?
Yes, so the seven and eight, especially the 2008 was the, that was investment return losses that year that, that got phased in. And when we jumped up, that was, we were using a smoothing method. We kind of reset it to say, we're not going to, we're going to recognize everything now because the market value was so much higher than the assumed value. We said we're just going to start new, raise it up. But at that time, I think we knew that there was investment losses coming. And so it's kind of reset, but then dropped right back down. So it's almost like, had we not, it would have been a little bit smoother path instead of up and then back down. And that's really getting back to that, that graph where Megan was showing all the volatility and the investment returns. That's the type of stuff that would happen on the funded ratio if we did not.
I think that just might be, I'm really glad you straightened out that 41% thing. I was getting palpitations. Speaking of assumptions, a cost, and this may or may not continue to be your issue, but are we operating on the assumption that our administrative costs are going to be roughly the same going forward even though we're not administering them in-house as opposed to now they're going to be administered? We're paying a fee to emperors to. Empers to administer or whatever's going on there? Does that change any of our assumptions or do we get to, is it roughly the same? And I don't know who the answer person is for that.
So I don't believe at this point in time, Ms. Ergenberger, there are expected to be any significant changes in the administrative cost. A limited number of staff at Empers will be charged directly to the plan. Since they do have a larger staff and a call center that addresses all plans, some portion of that will be charged to the plan. I would not anticipate necessarily any savings on the actuarial services or the death verification services. So I, I think that would be roughly the same. And then it would be the experience study and the annual valuations that would prompt any change in that administrative assumption over the years.
Excellent job.
I wasn't assuming we were going to save money because I know we're spending money already, but roughly the same expense and charge as a liability to the program is what I was asking. I do believe that was it, folks.
Thank you.
Thank you. So just real quick, and I want to stay on the assumptions here. Jump in the time machine with me, if you will, all the way back to 2021, when we had the last experience study and revised down the, the, you know, rate of returns and everything else. How much of those revisions was dictated based on, you know, the, the returns we had seen in the la, the previous four years before that? And I, I think I remember a big driver of that was also trying to get our assumptions to match what Empers was using for the state. I guess how much of it was what we were seeing in returns versus wanting to match what Empers was, knowing that the transition was coming?
Yes. Kind of two pieces. So I mentioned, like, when we look at the demographic or what happens to people, those assumptions, the retirement, the salary, the mortality, what's happened in the past is usually a good indicator of what we expect in the future. That is not the same for these economic assumptions. These are much more forward looking and past, or what's happened in the past does, you know, doesn't always drive what we expect to happen. And so when we set these, we're basically getting the, the investment consultants' input on what they expect the returns to be going forward. And because at the time, the 2021, the, the assets were already with the, with the NIC, we did say if they're invested essentially in the same place, that we should have roughly the same assumption. So both of them are getting down to the 7%. I think Empers decided to take the first step, the 20 basis point step. So they went 7.5 to 7.3 and then down by 10. OSERS, for at the time, decided to take the, the bigger step and the last one. But it was essentially over the same period, getting to the same place because of the, the investment consultants and the, and the NIC kind of investing the same way.
And, and so then now looking forward to the, the next experience study next year, you know, if we're already essentially going to be right where Empers is at, what, and you might not be able to answer this, but what are the chances that we're going to have a, you know, significant change either up or down in, in these assumptions?
Significant, I would say slim with what we've kind of seen, seen recently. Inflation, you know, was high, still higher than maybe the Fed was targeting, which, when you're looking at the investment return assumptions, kind of building blocks. So inflation is part of that total return. We've kind of seen throughout systems in total, getting down to about a seven, a 6.9% assumed return going forward, and it's kind of plateaued there, like it was a steep decline. So no, I can't answer where we're going to be because we'll need the information at that time and the forward looking assumptions from those investment consultants to kind of, to kind of help us out. But I would not expect a drastic recommendation from the actuary at that point. It is always the board's decision. Sometimes some boards are more conservative and say, we want to have a better than a 50% chance of meeting or exceeding our, our assumed return and we're, we're fine taking that hit on the contributions to, to have better results in the future, or hopefully better results in the future on the, the return. But I don't know if that answers your question.
No, it does. Thank you. And then the, kind of the last one that I have for you. So, and you had hit, hit on this a little bit in, in the slides, but you know, a lot of, a lot of the fundedness goes off of, obviously, the, the main source of income is those contributions from the active employees. And so if we have kind of a mass resignation event where we have, you know, 800 planned members leave at the end of one school year, obviously that increases the funded status pretty significantly. If, you know, conversely, so this school year, we just put, you know, using round numbers, roughly 19 million into staff payments and we had roughly half the number of expected teachers resigned. So I'm just, making an assumption on an assumption, what's that going to look like for next year?
So I'll start with the first piece, the, the termination. So when we have an active member, there's, we basically assume that part of them is going to terminate each year until they're retirement eligible and then a piece of them retires. Problem is, it's either one or zero. Either the full member terminates or doesn't. And so there's always this gain or loss. But generally what we see is if a member resigns before the retirement eligible terminates, that's good for the system. It's an actuarial gain because we're not going to have to pay them a benefit in the future or it's smaller than what we would have assumed. So if we have a, a mass exodus, that may be a liability gain. On the flip side is, membership and salary is really the lifeblood of, of a system. The more members you have, the more payroll you have, yeah, you have more liabilities, but you're bringing in more of those contributions. And so it's really hard to kind of be à la carte here and say, it's going to happen this way because so many things kind of interplay with each other and some up and some down. But I'm sorry, I don't have a better answer than that.
No, but I'm asking you to make a lot of assumptions there. So I completely get it. But no, thank you. I appreciate it.
Any, any other questions? All right. Saying done. As always, great presentation. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Appreciate your time.
Thank you very much.
So with that, we'll jump to agenda item number five, and Mr. Ryan will provide an update on the most recent audit conducted by the Nebraska Auditor of Public Accounts.
Good afternoon. Have a few items to update the trustees on, including the standard administrator's report. Today, we held an exit conference with the Nebraska Auditor of Public Accounts to go over the results of the calendar year December 31, 2023 audit. We received a draft management letter and audit report on Thursday, June 6. The audit report contains an unmodified opinion on the financial statements being properly presented, so a clean opinion. So the financial statements are materially correct. The management letter does contain nine findings and recommendations. There are no material weaknesses noted, the most severe level of finding. The management letter does have six significant deficiencies noted, which is the second most severe level of finding, and three reportable conditions, the least severe level of finding. Most of the findings are repeats of prior year findings or inadequate resolution of those prior year findings. Over the past year, we have devoted a considerable percentage of our resources towards the transition and the, of administration to Empers. And so we are, we're not able to address as many of the prior year findings as we would have anticipated. I take full responsibility for that. It is unfortunate, but we are working forward in conjunction with Empers to address any issues regarding membership data so that they have clean membership data when they transition over on September 1. And we are keeping Empers informed of the audit findings. And so that way, when the process of programming their system and administering the system moving forward, these will be resolved at that point in time. We will provide our management's responses to the APA on Monday, June 17. I'm currently working with staff on that and we'll review those with Mr. Ray and provide those to, with Mr. Head and Mr. Born for their review prior to submission. And the auditor has requested the opportunity to make a presentation at the next trustees' meeting on Thursday, August 1, to go over the findings in detail. I will send out a copy of the draft letter and draft audit report to all the members this evening before I leave. So you have a chance to review that.
So Mr. Ryan, I, so I sat in on the call today and it, it just strikes me, not to minimize any of this, but it strikes me as the majority of those deficiencies were because of the, the system, right? That, you know, that's going to, we're not going to utilize anymore and it seems to require quite a bit of updating and it's kind of an antiquated system. Is that, I mean, is that your, was that kind of your assessment as well of kind of how that went today?
So I would agree that decisions have been made in the past on the programming of the system and some errors were made in some resolution of system issues that caused many of the findings. Empers is fully aware of the findings and has done a thorough job in working through how to program the system. We spent a number of hours every week working directly with them and their vendor as district and OSER staff. And we have monthly leadership meetings between the two entities to go over the progress of the transition. We do anticipate that by virtue of programming a new system at Empers for the OSER system, that these will be addressed preemptively in that process.
Kind of my assessment as well. So thank you for clarifying that.
As long as we're asking questions, I have one. The management's response is going to be provided to APA on Monday, June 17. Hopefully not stepping outside my lane, but do we see that response as well? And not, not on August 1, but we get it when you say?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes. Any other questions before we move on? Okay. Next up, an update on the OSERS transition to Empers. All activities are currently on track for a successful transition to Empers by August 31, 2024 per statute. Transition work is progressing well. We had a steering committee meeting just this afternoon and there are no issues or items for escalation by Empers at the meeting today. They are working diligently on converting all of our legacy hard copy records to searchable digital records. The Secretary of State has scanned 97 boxes, which equates to 52,257 documents with 235,000 total pages. So they have all of the files online. So they are easily searchable for members if they call in and have questions. I believe the number they said this afternoon is there's about 10 to 20 boxes remaining. So we're about 80% of the way to having the, all of that information scanned. As part of the conversion process, they have data quality checkpoints. So as we provide them information, they do analysis, they run the data through different computer programs to analyze it for any anomalies or potential errors. Four of those reports have been shared with us for corrections. We have create, fully addressed a couple of those and we anticipate some more along the way. They have put together a hierarchy of the data, i.e. what's most important to get converted by September 1. And that involves active member data, the wage contributions, payment information, benefit information for existing beneficiaries receiving data. Currently, they're working on service credit, validating that, a member account balances. And so we anticipate that by the time we get to the cut over on the bottom half of the slide in late August, that all of the member data will be accurately reflected in PeopleSoft and handed over to Empers, who will then scrub the data for uploading into the system.
Mr. Ryan, I have a question over on this part of it. And maybe it's in response to the fact that I have some OEA retired peoples looking at the back of my head. I think one of the questions that Mr. Ray raised was that the transition for our members who are going from checks to deposits. And I think the question he asked was, how do they know the deposit has been made? Was I?
Yes.
Okay. I'm getting a nod. I'm not really sure what we could do about that. I know that I know the deposit's been made because I opened up my bank account on my computer. But are we at a minimum reminding them that they won't be getting paper checks anymore? Or is that something that, how, how are we helping our members make that transition? It's probably more than just the paper check issue. It's the letting them know what we're doing with our, you know, cut over data transfer. So it's not really about this slide, but just what are we doing to help them over the course of the next three months, I guess?
So we anticipate doing two more mailings from OSERS, one later this month and then one right before the transition on September 1. Empers is anticipating doing one more communication, which would be a member welcome packet, if you will. And so that would have that detailed information. At this point in time, Empers is not planning on mailing monthly statements to all members. But anytime there is a change in the amount of the benefit for the member, i.e. the medical COLA for those who qualify for that in October, or the annual COLA in January for all members, that would be communicated when there is an anticipated change in the amount of the benefit and what that new benefit would be.
So I'm assuming that at a minimum, one of those three mailings that's taking place will remind people who are not paying as close attention maybe as they could or should that the fact that they're not getting a check anymore does not mean they're not getting their money. And this is how you can see that you really got it, worst case, calling the help line down at Empers, I guess.
So I would like to differentiate and split some hairs there. Any member that's currently receiving a paper check, which there are a small number of, will continue to receive a paper check monthly through Empers, if that is their desire.
I didn't know that. So that is news to me. Thank you very much. Yes.
So what will change is the majority of our retirees who do receive direct deposit will no longer receive the monthly deposit notification or statement slip, which would generally arrive after they've already received the direct deposit.
Okay. So for those people, we tell them the fact that you're not getting this deposit notice doesn't mean you didn't get the deposit.
Correct.
Check your bank. Okay. Got it. Thank you very much. Have you noticed how much I'm learning today? This is great. Thank you. Appreciate it.
You're welcome. So on the bottom half of the slide, we have the current cut over schedule. So the last day, we will process live data for OSERS members. Active and retirees will be August 22. That's a Thursday. The following, that next Friday, we will run the last consolidation process for contributions and interest for members, active members, in preparation of handing that information over to Empers that evening or perhaps over that weekend. So they would have that ready to go on that Monday to upload in their system and do their final data quality review. On August 23, we will also process the last retiree payroll or benefit payments that we will make as the district. That would be for the September 3 benefit payment. We anticipate actually making that payment a few days early, probably on the 29th or the 30th, just so that happens within our fiscal year as a district and Empers isn't on the hook to make that first initial payment three days after they take over administration. So we agreed that it would be best for OPS and OSERS currently to make that September 3 payment prior to the transition. And then post August 23, any forms or requests that are received by the OSERS staff office will be held and passed over to Empers on September 1. staff office will be held and passed over to Npers on September first. Updates of beneficiary information, any new requests for refunds that may be received, so we won't have a quote-unquote blackout period, but there will be a period of time where we will not process any updates to the data in the system prior to handing it over to Npers, and they will receive whatever number of new information requests that we have during that limited period of time. And finally, in the process of programming the system that Npers will use, they asked a question on how we calculate benefits, and beginning in two thousand five, two thousand six, PeopleSoft, PeopleSoft has historically calculated benefits using service credit in one-tenth year increments. There was a statute change in two thousand five on how service credit was awarded to staff members, and it moved from a half-year increment to a one-tenth year increment. So you earn, as you work, service credit in tenth year increments. What didn't change in the legislation in two thousand five was the requirement to calculate the benefits based on a half-year increment. So for a number of years, OSER's has been calculating benefits for a limited number of beneficiaries with a service credit rate higher than what they should have. So if you retired with twenty-five point two years of service credit, you should have been rounded down to receive benefits based on twenty-five years of service. So no beneficiaries have been underpaid because of this error, but approximately five hundred and fifty-two of the five thousand nine hundred and eighty-eight retirees as of January first were receiving a benefit payment marginally larger than they should have, based on that additional point one to point four years of service credit. The monthly overpayment amount is approximately nine thousand one hundred dollars, and the cumulative overpayment amount since the first individual in two thousand five, two thousand six that had something other than a point zero or a point five service year credit is approximately six hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. Those are very round numbers. We did not, have not gone and dug into the details with the impact that COLA would have had on that over the course of the benefits, but that is a close approximation. We're currently working with Baird Home outside legal counsel to review IRS regulations to see what type of corrective action we would be compelled to take by that, and would then make a management decision on how to address those individuals who are currently receiving a higher benefit than the statutory amount.
I have a question, Mr. Ryan, thank you very much, because I know that this was, came as something of a, are you kidding me?
I would concur.
Maybe other words were involved, who knows? So when it says, as of January first, there were approximately five hundred and fifty-two retirees, presumably that number is continuing to go down if this has been happening since two thousand five, but that's where we're at now, is about five hundred and fifty-two. Are you in a position to say what the average overpayment is, or the range of overpayment that's happening for any one person?
I believe the average overpayment was approximately nineteen dollars per person.
Okay.
Some were, there was one individual who was as low as two dollars and some pennies, and another individual at the high end, I believe, was around the sixty-dollar range. I apologize, I don't have those numbers in front of me. On average, it was about nineteen dollars, but there were some individuals who it was a very de minimis amount, and other individuals who it is more considerable than that.
It was less de minimis, if there is such a thing, but that times twelve, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And I know it's very premature, so you can just say premature, but do you have any idea what corrective actions might be required? I mean, if a rebate, I mean, whose fault is it? Are, are we going to be tracking down these people? I'm saying this because I want our public to know this isn't going to happen, I hope, tracking down people and asking them to pay their money. May I back?
So certainly, we will place primary guidance on maintaining the tax-free status of the plan, and we'll do whatever IRS requires to maintain that status. I think the hope pending that guidance from the IRS regulations is that we would not be required to necessarily clawback any amounts from individuals that were obtained because of an administrative error in applying statute to the calculation of the benefit, but that would yet to be, that would be, to be determined.
So you've actually asked, answered the question that you've asked first, which is why are we talking to Baird Home, but that's, I mean, aside from the fact that there are legal issues, but specifically to maintain our tax status. Got it, thank you very much.
Any other questions? Moving on, just the standard information from the administrator's update. Here we have changes in the pension benefit payments over the last six months, won't go into any details there, very normal activity for the most part here in the first quarter of the year with some puts and takes from new retirees and stopped payments. We did see a number of payments changed in the April third, that was primarily due to some changes in the benefit amounts for those individuals, and we had to make adjustments due to the qualified domestic relation orders and a finding that we addressed at the time from the audit report. But you'll note that the total number of recipients has decreased marginally, while the total amount of benefit payments has also decreased marginally due to some net negative amount in the number of recipients. Refunds for the, from December twenty twenty-three to May twenty twenty-four, three hundred and total, three hundred and twenty-eight total refunds, just over six million dollars in contributions were refunded, and almost seven hundred and eight thousand dollars in interest earned on those contributions was refunded. Kind of piggybacking on the actuarial valuation, while we did refund member contributions to those members that have separated, the district portion of the contributions related to those employee contributions remain in the plan to pay future benefits for other And then, we have the most recent monthly financial statements on a cash basis for OSER's. I would draw your attention that total assets on the left upper half of the statement, almost one point seven billion dollars in total assets versus one point four billion dollars in the previous year for the same period, so we do see the benefit of that thirteen point three percent rate of return for the prior calendar year, as well as good returns for the first two months of calendar year twenty twenty-four. And speaking of that, here is the report from Aon, the investment advisor for the Nebraska Investment Council. The OSER's market value at the end of December thirty-one, twenty twenty-three was almost one point six billion dollars, had a one-quarter rate of return of seven point one percent, which was in the thirty-fourth percentile. The lower that number, the better your rate of return relative to everyone else in the market. The policy index was eight point one percent, so we didn't quite achieve that with some of the legacy assets for the real estate and other types of investments that we're slowly divesting ourselves of. But if we look out to the one-year rate of return, thirteen point three percent, sixteenth percentile, right at the policy index, and the three-year rate of return actually exceeded the policy index, five point seven percent over four point nine percent. Overall, the portfolio increased over the third, or the fourth calendar year quarter by almost ninety million dollars or six point zero eight percent. On the next slide, we have the same information as of March thirty-first, the most recently available. Again, our one-year rate of return is fourteen percent, so that would be April first, twenty-three to March thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. The fifteenth percentile, again, slightly ahead of the policy index of thirteen point seven percent or the eighteenth percentile. Our one-quarter return also trends a little bit above the policy index, and our fiscal year-to-date, September first through March thirty-first, is slightly below the policy index, but still very comparable to it. So the Investment Council continues to do a good job managing the available funds that are remitted for OSER's pensions, and is working diligently on slowly working down those alternative investments and making them a smaller portion of our portfolio.
That was what I was going to ask about, what, what, what percentage of our portfolio is what you one would call junk?
I apologize.
I would call junk, you all don't have to.
I am not going to give you a percentage on that on the top of my head, but I will email the trustees. It is ever-decreasing as there are opportunities to liquidate those investments, but I don't want to say the wrong number on something like that.
No, thank you, I appreciate that. You guys, in one of my former lives, we called things junk bonds, so that's why I'm using the word junk. I don't mean to be pejorative, or perhaps I do, but, okay, thank you, I just, the fact that it's going down
Yes.
and people are paying attention to getting rid of it is really the only important part. Thank you very much.
Yes, and I would say that the Investment Council is doing that in a prudent manner to retain as much of the capital invested in that as practicable versus doing a fireside sale and getting pennies on the dollar. And with that.
I've got a follow-up real quick, and this is just a remarkably granular question at the Secretary of State level for scanning the documents in.
Sure.
And so, A, it's just absolutely wild to me that in twenty twenty-four, we could have two hundred and, you know, essentially a quarter of a million, if not more, documents that are paper and not digitized, but that's beside the point. But in, in scanning documents, obviously, especially when you're scanning, you know, documents that are twenty, thirty, forty years old, there's a lot of times, there's going to be ink smudges and things like that, and the scan isn't necessarily going to be what the document initially was. Do we have people that are going through and spot checking and making sure that, you know, there's not fives becoming sixes or ones becoming sevens and vice versa, so that the digitized documents actually match up to what they should be?
Npers is doing a review of the scanned documents as they are notified that they're completed by the Secretary of State's office, excuse me, and there is a plan to maintain the hard copy records for a required number of years after the transition prior to disposing any of those.
Okay, perfect, thank you. I know that was extremely granular, it's just something that kind of popped into my head there, so thank you.
Any additional questions for Mr. Ryan on the audit, the transition to Npers or the administrator's report? Seeing done, thank you. The next regularly scheduled meeting of the Omaha School and Workplace Retirement System Board of Trustees will be held on Thursday, August first, twenty twenty-four, at four P.M. in the Teaching and Learning Center, the Teacher Administrative Center, thirty-two fifteen Cummings Street. Agenda will be kept current and available for public inspection in the retirement office at the Teacher Administrative Building during regular working hours. So with that, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, Mr. Ryan, please call the roll.
Mr. Born.
Yes.
Ms. Erdnberger.
Yes.
Ms. Block.
Yes.
Mr. Head.
Aye.
Ms. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Ray.
Yes.
Six ayes, Mr. Born.
All right, we are adjourned, thank you.